Uh-oh. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to June 21st, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Sina Nishad, proud Chair of the Committee, along with our great Commissioners. I'll welcome you to our meeting. May we have the roll call, please?
Chairman Nishad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Javid absent, Commissioner Little absent, Commissioner Maiken.
Here.
Commissioner Noyola absent, Commissioner Karishi.
Here.
Commissioner Sinigor.
Here.
Commissioner Steinhegen.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Harris.
Here.
All right, good afternoon again. We had the sad news of our good friend and longtime Councilman, Mr. W. A. Pass- W. Pate passing this last weekend, and I would like to offer a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We have sent out the minutes of the meeting of the May 17, 2021. I trust that everybody has received it. I would entertain a motion to accept or make changes to their minutes.
As I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as they are. Are there any comments or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the eyes have it. We're going to get started with our regular meeting agenda. Mr. Boone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Boone.
The first item on the regular meeting is File PZ 2021-138, and it's to consider a request for a replat of Block 27 in the west one-half block of 34, Beaumont Improvement Company into lots 1 through 4, Joyce Wilson Edition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. And these proposed lots are located approximately at 3870 through 3970 Maida Road. Callie Whitmire of Fitz and Shipman, Inc. has submitted a request for approval of this replat. The purpose of the plat is to evenly divide the tract into four evenly sized, buildable residential lots. And you can see the proposed lots there in front of you. That's the only slide I've got. As this is a residential replat, we have sent out 19 notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor. We did receive one response in opposition from a Caesar Anthony, or should I say Anthony J. Caesar, at 3755 Maida, and simply responded that they were not in favor of the request without additional comment. However, based on the proposed plat, staff has found that it meets the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations, and staff is recommending approval of the proposed plat. With that, are there any questions of staff?
What is the shed back on that property?
It would be 25 feet on the front.
Any other questions?
What are the sizes of the lots?
So the sizes... Let's see. They certainly exceed the minimum. It looks like they are in excess of
So 125.
100. Let me get my larger copy.
125, I believe.
Yes, sir. So the width along...
No, it's more than that.
145.
143.
I apologize that sketch in your agenda package is... So the 561 and 50 feet deep along Barrett, and then the width along Maida is 145, roughly 145 feet in width. So they're well above the minimum required.
Any other questions for Mr. Boone?
Chris, the gentleman who had an opposition on this, is his name listed on the property owners? I didn't see that. Within the 200 feet?
Caesar Anthony.
Last one, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, page three, your staff report lists the notification. It's the last one.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? You guys are the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Would you come by and give us any other information if you have any? If you please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joyce Wilson. I live at 2180 Fillmore Street here in Beaumont.
All right, ma'am. Do you have any other information that you'd like to give us other than what Mr. Boone has presented?
No, all I want to- because I don't know why Mr. Caesar is against it, because me, as a mother of four sons, I bought the property to give to my four sons.
Great.
And it just is, at my age, in six months, I lost five siblings. And I saw how their children, after their mother passed, arguing over stuff. So I decided to give my children what I had for them while I was still living. And that's what it is, because it's homes that they're building. So I don't understand why Mr. Caesar would be against homes being built in that neighborhood. It's just empty land.
All right, ma'am. Thank you very much. Is there any question for the lady? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
We now open the floor to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment for or against this case? Hearing none. We're going to close the public hearing. And we've heard from the applicant and also the staff, and I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. My one and you can second now. Who's seconding?
I second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing, ma'am. That's very noble. Mr. Boone? PZ 2021-161. Why did you have to make this number so long, Chris?
That's a long story. Let's see. PZ 2021-161 is preliminary plat for the Kingswood Place subdivision phases 2 through 5. Danielle Dotson of Fitz and Shipman has requested preliminary plat approval of Kingswood Place subdivision phases 2 through 5. This 26.52 acre development will connect Kingswood Drive to Minner Drive and consists of 119 residential lots. And let me go ahead and show you, again, this plat's probably harder to read than the last with 119 lots, but you can see the proposed preliminary plat. And let me show you, this is an aerial vicinity map that kind of shows you where the subdivision ends up. You can see Minner Drive is to the north. It's the one that kind of hooks from the north down to the south, connecting into the proposed subdivision. I'll zoom in a little bit. You can read the street name. Kingswood, Beaumont. So you can see the area outlined in red is where the proposed subdivision is located. And again, going back to the plat, you can see what they're proposing to do is extend Minner and looping it around to the south, and then connecting it back to Kingswood. And having said that, in the staff report, we've got some text in here out of the subdivision regulations, and I'll go ahead and read that to you now. Section 26.02.002A 7 of the regs say the proposed plan of subdivision shall show how the streets and easement in the subdivision will connect with those in the surrounding subdivision. Furthermore, Section 26.03.001-3C states that the subdivision plat shall provide for the logical extension of abutting and proposed utilities and drainage easements and improvements in order to provide for system continuity and to promote future development of adjacent areas. And we pointed that out because, as you can see, while Minner connects, loops down and connects to Kingswood, it does not connect to Beaumont Drive there to the southwest. And so we've pointed that out. We've actually made condition one of the recommendation to be connect Trevor Trace to Beaumont Drive or provide justification for not doing so. And I think going back to the subdivision regulation that I referenced in the staff report, if you look at that section of the subdivision regulation, it talks about the general design principles, the layout of the neighborhood. And so, like we've talked about in some recent meetings, the idea is you have either a gridded development pattern or a curvilinear. You might have curved streets. And so this section speaks to that as to how you want to basically design to these kinds of principles. And so in this section of the regulation, it talks about the neighborhood, what they call the neighborhood unit concept. That refers back to the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan refers to the neighborhood unit, which is simply, if you might think of a residential neighborhood. So an enclosed neighborhood that may or may not have a elementary school. That's kind of the original idea. And then it have enough population to support an elementary school. But anyway, I bring all that up to say that in this section that I referenced in the staff report is that the subdivision plat shall provide for logical extension of abutting and proposed utilities and drainage easements and improvements in order to provide for system continuity and promote future development. So the question becomes, and I'll also mention that if you go back to the comprehensive plan, it is a guide. And if you read the text of the subdivision regulations, these are general design principles. So it's not a hard and fast rule that this, having said all that, it's not a hard and fast rule this subdivision connects to Beaumont. But we felt like because of the way it's described in both the subregs as well as the comprehensive plan that the developer at least provided reason as to why it not connect. And again, there's no hard and fast rule. It's simply a question of what is reasonable and what makes sense. So again, if you noticed in the staff report, rather, the first condition is that Trevor indeed connect to Beaumont Drive, or they provide justification for it not doing so. Furthermore, based on everything proposed and review, furthermore, we are recommending approval of this plat, again, subject to that connection or justification for not doing so. Condition two is the legend will need to be updated to include FOMHSL and BSL. Number three, water mains between two lots must be cased, and a 10-foot exclusive water line easement shall be dedicated. If the water main is not cased, then a 20-foot exclusive water line easement must be dedicated. Water lines shall be located in the center of the easement. Number four, unnecessary dead end water lines should be eliminated wherever possible. Number five, lift station needs to be located within a utility easement. Number six, utility easement should split utilities evenly. And then finally, number seven, remove HP pipe and HDPE from the plat and correct spelling of water valve in the legend. And I believe we have some engineering and water utility staff here in case you have specific questions on those comments. But based on that, that is the recommendation of this item from staff. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
Chris, I have a comment on item number one. You say connect Trevor Trace to Beaumont Drive or provide justification for not doing so. I don't think that we're in a position to sit here and listen to back and forth about justification. Do you want to just say that it needs to be connected and get on with it, or what?
Well, the reason...
Or we have an option of putting this off for you guys to resolve that and bring it back later.
Well, so the reason we put it this way is that there can be an, it has to be reasonable as to whether or not we should require it to be connected to Beaumont. Having said that, we did not have the benefit of public notices going out, response from neighbors. So in other words, the idea is if some neighbors showed up from Beaumont Drive and said, and requested that it be connected, we would have the benefit of those comments. As of now, we don't have any responses. The same thing for the other streets. In addition, we didn't have the benefit of the justification from the applicant, which again, I feel like the commission should hear the reason why staff is even bringing it up, and then also hear from the applicant as to the justification. Because at the end of the day, it's not a hard and fast rule that they have to connect. It's just, it needs to be looked at in a reasonable fashion to determine whether or not it should be connected. So that's the reason why we present it. And I wish I could say recommend yes or no, but it's not quite that cut and dry.
We'll hear from Mr. Dotson, and then we'll make that decision.
Can you put the page one back? Page one?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Boone?
No.
So the detention pond is proposed, and that's what's been reviewed, and we have no comments on it. So I would defer to their engineer, but whether or not it's absolutely necessary, I don't know, but we could find that out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. Dotson? Good afternoon to you, sir.
Good afternoon. Daniel Dotson with Fitz and Shipman Engineers, 1405 Cornerstone Court, Beaumont, Texas.
You did hear the conversation, right?
Correct, yes, sir. And there's a couple of reasons why we didn't connect to Beaumont Drive. One of the reasons was when we read the ordinance, it stated for, to promote the future development of the adjacent areas. Well, after this section is built out, you know, there's a railroad track on one side, and then surrounding it is already an existing neighborhood development. So this is the future development. There would be no more development from here on. The other reason was we looked at connecting Trevor to Beaumont Drive, and when we did that due to the proximity of the property line on the west side, the right away of Beaumont Drive is close enough to that property line that we actually lost several lots when we tried to connect that too. So putting the cul-de-sac in allowed us to get a couple more lots in that area. So those were the two reasons that we, from an engineering standpoint, were requesting the cul-de-sac instead of connecting to Beaumont Drive.
Mr. Dotson, that sounds like an economical reason, not an engineering reason. You're losing some lots. That's...
Well, the lots that would be there would be non-conforming lots. They wouldn't meet the minimum city standard for the lots.
I understand, so you would lose some lots, right?
Correct. There would just be vacant property there that wouldn't be able to be developed.
Or it would be added to the adjacent property.
I guess that's something that could be considered.
I'm looking for an engineering reason, not an economical reason.
Well, you know, the reason why we weren't going to go back and negotiate with the people, the property next door or other property owners, they're not the property owner that owns the development right now.
I understand.
And then, you know, the utility extensions, we are looping the water lines. We're looping actually back to Beaumont Drive through easement. So we are continuing water through the subdivision back to Beaumont Drive to connect the actual utilities. The only thing that we weren't connecting was the roadway.
I understand. Any comments or questions for Mr. Dotson?
How many exits and entrances? We have two?
There'll be two main entrances, one from Kingswood and one from Minner Drive.
That's good.
And that's a collector's street all the way around.
Mr. Boone, do you have any comments?
And the owner and developer here is here as well. If he has any questions or concerns or comments, he's...
How many fire hydrants do you have on here?
The fire hydrants, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but we spaced them at the minimum 500 feet. Actually, they're less than 500 feet, just the way that the layout worked per the city fire marshal requirement. So I don't have to go through and count.
Yeah, the thing I would comment is I think, you know, some good points were made. In other words, this is not, for example, the western or northern boundary of the city where the idea would be further development would push out. So I think that's valid. The other is, as mentioned, the proposed loop there is to a collector's standard. And the idea behind a collector is you obviously collect the local residential traffic to a collector, which takes it out to the major arterial. Because, again, this is kind of infill development. You've got a railroad track, as mentioned. There won't be opportunity for, again, the kind of ideal neighborhood growth boundary plan. And I'll also mention that in the text description of a neighborhood growth that we keep referring to, which again, the subdivision refers to, it does refer to curvilinear streets with cul-de-sac patterns. So just having the cul-de-sac in and of itself is not necessarily that much of an issue. So again, I think those are valid arguments.
So do you agree with it?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dotson.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great, so we don't need public hearing for this one and public comments. So we have heard from, oh, water utilities. You guys are okay? Any problems? He's going to loop the water line, so your last chance.
We have no problem. We have no objections to it.
All right, thank you very much. We've heard from the applicant and also the staff, and the staff does agree with their idea of not connecting Beaumont to Trevor. And with that, I will look for a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the eyes have it. Mr. Boone, PZ 2021-169.
Yes, okay. The final item on the regular agenda is the request to abandon a portion of Cottonwood Street. Don Burrell of Fitz and Shipman is requesting the abandonment of Cottonwood Street between Concord Road and St. Helena Street. The Beaumont Independent School District would like to encompass this portion of Cottonwood in their new bus parking facility. The street currently cuts the existing facility in half. Gates will be installed to eliminate public access. Due to the proximity of the new fire station, the fire department is requesting that a Knox Gate system be installed for emergency access. And I will say that we have had, in the run-up to this application, the city staff, especially fire department, has been in meetings and discussions with Fitz and Shipman as well as BISD to make sure that there's no negative impact on the closing of this portion of Cottonwood. So based on this, staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the following conditions. Number one, retain existing utility easement for the water line. Number two, gates will require installation of a Knox Gate system. And then finally, condition number three, if approved, applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title commitment must be submitted to the planning office along with the proof that the payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on the city council agenda. And again, you recognize that comment from our recent abandonments, which is required. Based on that, are there any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Is the applicant in the audience? Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, sir. Do you have any additional comments that you'd like to present?
Benjamin Tristain with Fitz and Shipman, 1405 Cornerstone Court. I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
How are they going to use this property?
Right now, they are in the early stages of planning a transportation center. They're looking to consolidate some of their facilities into one.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard from the staff and the applicant. I entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the eyes have it. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this completes our regular meeting. Now we're going to start our planning and zoning and city council meeting. And I want you to know that this is a historical event for our commission. For the first time, we have the longest-serving female mayor in town being with us, and the first African-American elected mayor for city of Beaumont that is present with us. I'll congratulate you, Mrs. Muton. More than congratulating you, you are the best daughter, having given your father the best Father's Day present anybody could give. So you give him my love and a big hug. Madam Mayor, we have remembered our colleague, Mr. Pate, previously, and my condolences to all of his friends and colleagues. With that, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I do believe we have a quorum, so we have the roll call.
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Protem Felchaus absent. Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Durya.
Here.
Thank y'all all for coming. I just want to explain what we're getting ready to do. We're going to have a joint public hearing between the planning commission and the city council. The reason we are here as a group today is if you are here for an item on our agenda, you will have to come back to the council meeting. We will hear this item at the same time. However, I do need to know, you do know that today is the day of the public hearing, so if you would like to speak on this, any of these items, I can do this at lunch, then today is the time to do so. It will not be available for comment when it comes to the board of the city council. And before I turn it back over to you, Chairman, I just want to say, this is my last planning and zoning meeting, and I want to thank you all for your service. Everyone doesn't realize how much time it takes for the volunteers that serve on all of our boards and commissions. And I just want to thank you for your time and your efforts today and in the past many years. For those of you that have been on for a long time, so thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And you realize that this is the third goodbye that we're officially saying to you, right?
You probably will have another one tomorrow and next week. But I don't know who's going to be here, so I want to just thank y'all for your service.
Well, I talked to Rodney, and he said you might not be here for the next commission meeting.
Not in July. Unless I have an item on the agenda.
Mr. Boone?
Good afternoon. Our one and only item on the joint meeting is PZ 2021-162, and it's to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a church in an RCR Residential Conservation Revitalization Historic District. This is the property at 2453 Broadway. Weldine Smith is requesting the specific use permit to establish a church at this location. The most recent occupant of this property was an office space for Jason's Deli. Worship services would be held on Sunday mornings. And let me go ahead and show you the slides. You can see this is the proposed site located on Broadway between 8th and 9th. This is the proposed site plan. This is a view, aerial view of the property. Again, you can see, like, several of the commercial properties in this area were homes at one time converted to office uses. Again, Jason's, Jason's Deli was located at this location at one time. You can see the house and then the paved parking in the rear. Aerial photograph, not very good resolution, but you can kind of make out the cars in the back. This is a view of the subject property. Also the subject property, a view to the west, view to the north, the northeast, the east. And we did send out twenty-seven notifications to area property owners. We have received one in favor and one in opposition. The one in favor was Charles, John Charles White, neighboring property owner. And then we have a, one in opposition from a Mr. Cobb, Gary Cobb, twenty-four seventy Liberty. No comments other than they're just opposed to the proposal. However, based on the application, staff is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, to update the site plan to show the proposed parking layout with dimensions to meet city requirements. And number two, to re-stripe the parking at the building. Again, we believe it is, it is paved, it's just not properly striped. But with that, are there any questions of staff? If not, I do believe the applicant is in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. And Mr. Smith? Oh, Mrs. Smith, good afternoon, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, ma'am. If you would state your name and address for the record and we would love to hear any comments you might have.
Welding Smith, twenty-three eighty Long Street, Beaumont. I live in the area, in the historic district area.
All right. And you're going to start a church in here? And how many people do you think you're going to have?
We have, we currently are a congregation that formerly, before, well, before COVID, we rented the middle space of the Dalio Pharmacy and we were there for several years having church services. We plan to have a home church, not a church with a steeple-type church. Our goal, we have a small congregation between ten and twenty regularly attend. It's a very small congregation, but our real mission is to reach out to the homeless and the hungry in our community. Three of the families in our congregation live in the historic district. So we're sensitive to the importance of sustaining and maintaining good value for the people who live there. But we're also concerned that there are many people who are really very unfortunate. When we had our services in the Dalio Pharmacy building, frequently people would simply come in off the streets on Sunday to, for worship. However, they were dressed, however they could be, we accepted them. We are aware, we are also have been really very active in the LGBT community in the area and have participated and been part of the local pride activities. As I say, we're a small group. We simply want to be a place where those who are a little less fortunate in our community have the opportunity to be part of a church family, just to be together, to have someone who really cares. And that's our goal.
Great, that's very admirable. Any questions for the lady?
I just, I do want to say one more thing. We haven't even made an offer to purchase this building because we didn't want to do that if we found out we couldn't have a church there. And so that's why we've, we've come to the planning committee to, to see if what we want to do for, for the community is acceptable.
Well, that's real easy, just a couple of short prayers, you ought to take care of it, right?
Well, we've been doing that.
Any questions for the lady?
Who is going to give the ride to the homeless people?
Pardon?
Ride to the church?
Ride. Who's going to bring them?
Yeah.
They'll come by walking. That's our experience, that they've walked, they've come on their bicycles, the ones that came to us. We realize that there are multiple facilities there, apartments, you know, not really wonderfully put together buildings that most likely have people who need someone to really care about them. And that's what we want to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other than Sunday service, what other activities would be there? What days of the week, what times a day?
We, that's all the services we've had. Now, we may begin to have Sunday school if we find there's local children in the, in the area that, and we would have Sunday school. What we really do is have a facility where we can keep clothing. We, some of the ladies in our group make mats for the homeless out of plastic trash bags, not trash bags, grocery bags. We crochet them and we take those. Our outreach really to the homeless has been where we go where they are. I included a letter in the application. At one point, we had been connected with Tan Healthcare. To go with them when they would go out into the area to provide healthcare, we would, we would go and provide food. We would go and, with our clothing and stuff that we were able to give to them. So we try to work with other people in the community as well. But we don't, those are our only, at this time, church services. Obviously, if people would want to meet on an evening or something like that for a prayer service or a class, we would look to some expansion. But we, we're not, we're not going to have things every day, all day, that sort of thing. It will be a house of worship and also a place for us to have supplies that we can give to those who need.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from Mrs. Smith and also the staff. And I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
That we approve, file P Z two oh two one dash one sixty-two.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second for Mr. Senegal. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith, good luck to you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will see you around town.
Thank you, we are joined.